Good evening and welcome to the Auburn in Large School District Forum for 2014, brought to you by Kewa Community College and The Citizen. I'm your moderator, Guy Casentino. On May 20th, voters across the state of New York will go to the polls not only to vote on school budgets, but also candidates for school boards. In Auburn, the polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and there are three slots open here in Auburn, and we're delighted to be able to bring you three of the four candidates who have registered and have qualified for the election. As we've done over the years, we bring you candidates from everything from county legislature and Congress to district attorney, mayor, sheriff, and the county legislature. Tonight, we have in the studio three of the individuals seeking a three-year term. This is for an unpaid position with the Auburn in Large School District. We have with us Eli Hernandez, who is finishing off his first term in office, Monica Salvage, who is running for her first time for the Auburn in Large School Board, and Kathy Barnard, who is making a second run for the board. Welcome to all three of you. We're going to have opening statements in a few minutes, but we'll like to also introduce Jeremy Boyer, the executive editor of The Citizen, who for, I think since forever, has been doing questions here for school board and all the other November contests, and we'll have him back here in November as well. So we'll start with our two-minute opening statements. They are being timed by Cassie, who is a second-year student here. They have two minutes to make their opening statement, and then we'll go to Q and A. Mr. Hernandez, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Kewa Community College, The Citizen, Jeremy Boyer, and Mr. Guy Casentino for hosting this forum this evening. In addition, I would like to thank Ms. Salvage and Ms. Barnard for participating in the forum. Good evening, families and friends of the Auburn community. Thank you for allowing us to come into your homes today to talk about important issues that affect us all, our children's education. My name is Eli Hernandez. My former students would call me Senor Hernandez. I reside in Owosco with my wife Rena, who's a teacher, a Spanish teacher at the Auburn Junior High School, and my son Enrique and my daughter Mariela, who attend Owosco Elementary School. I am a parent, an educator, an administrator, a coach, a community leader, and a seasoned board member. Three years ago, the community elected for change in the Auburn School Board. You elected me to serve your children and the community. Since that time, there has been many changes. We have successfully hired a new superintendent, collaborated with the community, and passed two budgets. During my first term, I focused on policy review and board leadership and transparency. In 2014, Auburn in Large City School District continues to face challenges. The district must continue to forge ahead with a visionary leader that understands the work that needs to be done. The district must continue to be fiscally responsible and accountable to the taxpayers and the children it serves, as well as ensure that we have successful students. One of the things that I used to do when I was a coach was, I used to have a quote I used to share with my students and my athletes, and the quote is, "Good, better, best. Never let it rest until your good is better and your better is best." And we are better now, and we need to continue to be our best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. We'll now hear from Monica Salvage. Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Community College as well for providing the venue for this forum tonight. Thanks for Jeremy Boyer for taking the time to ask us questions, and Guy Casentino for hosting the forum and moderating the forum. Good evening. My name is Monica Salvage, and I'm running for the Auburn School Board because I truly believe that every child needs a fair shot at a high-quality public education. And I'm confident that here in Auburn, we're on a good path to providing just that. I also believe that a strong public education system is one of the building blocks of a prosperous community. People choose to move to a community when it is able to provide high-quality education to their children. When businesses relocate, they seek out communities that provide good public schools, not only for the employees' families and children, but also as a feeder system for qualified future employees. So in essence, strong public schools are not just good for the kids who attend them and the parents who send them there, but it is vital for the entire community to prosper and grow. And that's exactly what I want for our children and for Auburn, to prosper and to grow. I have a strong history of community service and years of experience in community outreach and economic development. Now, I'm offering my services and passion and time to advocate for our children and the district while still being mindful of my fiscal responsibility towards the taxpayers. I chose deliberately Auburn Public Schools for my daughter, and when I'm elected, I will work tirelessly to help make Auburn Public Schools the schools of choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salvage. Ms. Barnard, welcome.
Again, I echo the thank you very much for sponsoring the forum, Mr. Boyer, Mr. Casentino, and the staff here. And I particularly want to thank the people who signed my petition, who showed a faith in me to give me a second chance at this. As I indicated, I ran two years ago. I've learned a lot since then. I was quite happy that even though I didn't gain a seat, that I did. 1,200 people thought I had something to say that was worthwhile. Went back to the drawing board, monitored the situation with the budget, the improvements with the capital project, kept tabs of that online and through on TV the school board meetings because I was not able to, I was going to run last year, but I wasn't able to. I had family obligations, like taking a granddaughter home from work every night. Some of the issues we still have are, and I know that we'll talk about tonight, is the budget, getting Albany to restore the monies that they had taken from us over the years, familiarization with the Common Core. Parents talked to me about smaller classes, trying to reopen West Middle, combining, they had issues with combining elementary with junior high school students. I'm hoping to bring a lifetime of experience, determination, and dedication to this position, and also help to make Auburn School stand out as a top-notch school district in the state of New York. Thank you.
Thank you for your opening statements. And just for the record, just so viewers are aware, there are three slots open. Mr. Hernandez is seeking reelection. Carol Soles, who contacted us in advance, could not be here, is also running. And then we want to let you know that Amanda Grover, because of a positive change in her job outlook, is not seeking reelection. And we just want to make sure that is clear at the start. We'll now turn to Mr. Boyer, who can ask questions of any of the candidates. We'll go in rotation. We'll start with, if it's for all candidates, we'll start with Mr. Hernandez and then work our way down. Mr. Boyer?
This one is for everyone. I'm going to start a question or two in the area of school safety, and one of the debates that's happened here just about every year since I've been here is funding for school resource officers in the school buildings. In Auburn, there's two in the high school, one in the middle school, and one who works across the five elementary schools, and the district pays about $230,000 and change for that. My question for all the candidates is, is that the right number for our schools? Is that the right number to have in your mind? And if, you know, if it should be higher or lower, how would you go about making that change?
Okay. Mr. Hernandez, you have two minutes on this.
Thank you. And this is in regard to SROs?
SROs, yeah.
Okay. So I'll start by talking about the school safety. One of the things that we've done on the school board this year is we've actually addressed some safety issues, safety concerns in all our buildings. And you can see that we use, we're able to tap into the capital project to make some improvements. So we have a better system now as far as security is concerned. So to answer the question, could we use more SROs? Absolutely. At this time, we have a system that is working. Could it be better? It can always be better, and that's part of what we're talking about. How do we become from good to best? We can certainly use more. Last year, we had a little bump in the road, but it was fixed with the superintendent and the city and Chief Nagel, and we're at a better place now to be able to move forward with our SROs. It seemed we were in jeopardy last year. Right now, we're excited, looking at the budget and where we're at, that we'll be able to have our SROs in our buildings, which we so need for our security.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Salvage, on the issue of SROs?
Obviously, school safety is a huge topic. I mean, we just only need to look at national news every few weeks or every few months. We hear something about something entering a school building, and people are just in general wary of if their children are safe in schools. School safety for me is also not just looking at intruders and how we can work with that, but also bullying, for instance. You know, that's also a safety issue on a different level, maybe. Specifically to SROs, I think it's good to have them in school because it makes people feel safe, it makes kids feel safer, and their parents as well. Like Eli said, if we could have more, I think it would help, but I also talked to staff recently and counselors at the middle school, and they feel that they're in a good place right now in terms of the kids are okay, they don't have a lot of complaints. And I think in terms of the work that the SROs are doing, I think they're doing a good job, and just their presence there, I think will help alleviate some of the problems that you might have had in the past.
Thank you. Ms. Barnard?
Yes, I agree with the presence of the SROs in school. When I was in school, which was many years ago, basically the truance officer was the fix-it person, and you didn't have the socioeconomic or problems that you have in today's world that cause some of these issues that we have in the schools regarding safety. And like any other candidate's extent, you read things in the paper almost on a weekly basis about schools that are very challenged, like Connecticut. And that, it literally scares the daylights out of me when you're talking about our children and their safety. I really don't think there's any amount of money that you could equate to the safety of your children. Those things really bring it into the local consciousness, and I've also spoke with staff members. I know people who are retired teachers, and they say that one of their primary concerns is, in fact, the safety of those kids, both in and out of school, their safety, their children's safety, and any one of them would put their life on the line to provide that safety. I have grandchildren in the district. My oldest granddaughter graduated, is graduating from this school this semester, going on to be a teacher. So that's foremost in my mind as she goes into the job market, the conditions and the environment that she will be in. And she's very dedicated to her ongoing goal is to be a teacher. So I think the SRO provides an outlet for kids to go to if they have a problem, and the SROs are also trained to look for those kinds of earmarks that suggest that a child might have some issues to talk about.
All right. Thank you. What we didn't say, which you both, all three know, is that you can respond if someone has already spoken. You have one minute to respond. Cassie will show the sign for half a minute, at half a minute. Mr. Hernandez, you have one minute.
One of the things I wanted to talk about was DASSA, Dignity for All Students Act. It is a law. When we talk about children being bullied, it's against the law. And so every school, every school in Auburn City School District, every building has a DASSA coordinator, someone that's been appointed, where you could bring in your complaints. And that's important for parents, everyone to know. We have lowered discipline. Discipline has been lowered. Bullying has been lowered, and you can see in the buildings on how it's done. The SROs are crucial, okay? And in some cases, you may look at it while nothing's happening, but what's happening is preventive. And I'm in this field every day, and so a lot of our work is, how do we prevent from it happening? And that's one of the things that was important with the staff as well as our SROs, the preventive measures that are taken.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Mr. Boyer?
Another aspect of that, and honestly, I've seen it this year as a parent on a few occasions, is the communication when there is an incident in the school building. And, you know, we've been very fortunate, as you've all noted, to, our schools have been safe by and large, but every once in a while, something will happen. You know, a kid, I think in Herman Avenue earlier this year, had a BB gun in the school building, and we got a phone call to say, there's a note, look for a note, and then the note explained the call. And then there's been another case where it took a couple of days for a note to come home. So I'm just wondering, you know, do you feel like that the communication of how to inform parents and the public about incidents that come up is in a good spot right now in the district? And if not, you know, what recommendations do you have for how those kinds of things should be handled?
This for all three candidates?
Yes.
I will start with Ms. Salvage.
I've heard about that incident on Herman Avenue as well. My daughter's starting kindergarten in the fall, so I don't have any firsthand experience of how the communication systems work. What I do know is that there are chains of command in place if certain safety situations occur, who to call within staff and within administration, and then how this chain of command goes out into the public. There are phone systems, phone messaging systems that are in place, email things that go out, and certainly probably also letters in the mail with the children. I totally agree as a parent, where you're not with your child most of the day, it's important for you to hear about things like that very quickly because you don't want to hear it from somebody else, you want to hear it from the school first. So definitely the communication to parents and to the community as a whole is very important to me. I am a very involved person in general, and with my child soon starting school, I'm going to be a very involved parent. So I'll be watching closely for those firsthand communications between the parents and the school district.
Thank you, Ms. Salvage. Ms. Barnard?
Yes, I do know that certain mechanisms are in place in the schools for communication with the parents, and I think it's very important to get this information out in a very timely manner. Like I said, I've also got grandchildren in the district. I used to bring my grandkids over to the high school nursery program, and we'd talk with the intake person there, and she informed me also, because you had to check in, write the names of the kids down, and walk them down. And of course, it's been a while since they went there, but I know that these mechanisms are in place via the chain of command, superintendent, principal, teacher, whatever the case may be. I think it's important to have those communications to get this information out, depending on the situation at hand, so that the parents are well-informed and plenty of time to be able to handle the tactical situation and make better decisions regarding their child's safety at that point.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez, you have two minutes.
So as a person who works in a building on a daily basis, I will tell you that the first and most important thing is the safety of staff and students, period. I will not be concerned about informing the public until I have everyone safe. It's important to say that. Once everyone is safe, you are right. How do we improve on those communications? One of the things that we have nowadays is, everything goes viral instantly. It can be from a cell phone, from a staff, from a student, from anyone, instant Facebook tweet, whatever, you name it. Unfortunately, sometimes that does not help our situation in trying to keep everyone safe. There are protocols in the district that allow us to move forward in most, like I said before, the safety of everyone in the building. That's the first thing. Technology in this case, sometimes it goes out before everything is settled, and that's certainly something that we will continue to work on. The good thing is that Auburn is constantly reviewing this. We have procedures in place. We have committees that look at this along with the SROs and allow us to make improvements. We do simulations, and I say we, I'm saying, you know, the SROs as well as the school district, together, they do simulations in order to prevent. When we do fire drills, they're preventive. How do we go back and how do we fix it? Certainly, communication can improve, and sometimes it's how you provide the safety of every student and the privacy of every staff member and student, and get that information at a timely manner. As a parent, I want it immediate, and I won't be able to have that at all times. And I do know that being an administrator in a building, that the first thing is not for me to call you as a parent, but for me to keep your child safe. And then we will work with the communication. I agree. We could do better, and that's some of the things that, again, we're continuing conversations, we will improve.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ella's there. Next question.
You don't have to drag her into the politics.
Okay. We won't.
No, the, in talking about SROs, I think Eli may have alluded to it, I think, a little bit in working with the city on the funding mechanism, and there's been a few issues in the past year or two with regards to city funding and city working with school district on issues like crossing guards, fees for the use of facilities like Casey Park. My question for all of you is, right now, I mean, do you see the city, the relationship between the school district and the city of Auburn as something that needs to be improved? And if so, what can be done to improve that?
We'll start off with Ms. Barnard.
I wrote about that in the paper last year, where, especially when it came to the issue with the crossing guards, and I'm trying to make sure I get this right, that they felt that the city, the schools should pay for the crossing guards, and the school said that there was some sort of legal mechanism in place that they could not provide the funding for that. So I think, first of all, you'd have to look at the legalities of the situation behind that to see who can fund what, where can these monies come from? And since I think the crossing guard are important, because I drive through two elementary schools going on my way to work, I think it has to become a partnership of sorts to say, okay, it's not just the job of one entity or another, but we have to get collaborative with this and make sure we have these safety features and this person there that can provide this job and provide this personnel to be there for these kids, because unfortunately, drivers sometimes don't pay a whole lot of attention to these kids. And we don't want these children being hurt on the way to school. So from where I sit, I think it would be very important for the city and the school district to be collaborative in this effort and maybe take a look at the laws behind this, and if there needs to be an adjustment or rewriting, then I would be very much encouraged that to happen so that we make sure that those staff needs are met.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez?
So we talked, you said a little bit about communication and how do we improve that when it comes to city and the district relationship? I can tell you that the district and the city relationship is fine. You look at the letters, you look at the information, the city can afford this, district can afford this. How do we work together? The first thing that the district did was, we examined, where are these positions being cut as far as the crossing guards? Can we sustain? Most important, again, the safety. How do we deal with it? The law, can we follow? We have to follow the law. And it works out. It worked out because of the leadership. It worked out because of the leadership in the district, it worked out because of the leadership in the city. Plain and simple. We are at a better place now than we were a few months ago when this stuff comes out. When we talk about budgets, it's just hard, okay? Which you can attribute all these things happening to fiscal responsibility and where we're at. The city is trying, the district is trying, someone has to come back to us. And, you know, I'm not trying to move you forward into the fiscal piece, but we have money that they owe this district, okay? And we don't have that, and we constantly, for the past three to four years, have been banging and knocking on the doors, and community has come out in support in order to get what we need. And we're getting it there very slowly, but we're getting there. We're at a better place than we were three years ago, okay? As far as the communication and the relationship, I think it's great. I think it's fine where we're at right now.
Thank you. Ms. Salvage?
When we talk about relationships between the city and the school districts, or relationships in general, it has to happen over time, and it has to happen throughout the year. It's not just about relationships when it's budget time, and we need to find funds somewhere, and we see where we can get those funds. So I think the important part is to keep talking throughout the year about the issues that might arise, because it's not just the budget time where we finally realize we need certain things, or the school district needs certain things, or the city does. We should be thinking and talking about those things throughout the year. So then if things arise, or situations arise where we could say, you know, we could share services, or we could share costs on certain issues, we would have the time to actually talk about it, talk about the legalities, talk about how we could make this work. But if we were in a time crunch, because you want to pass a budget within a week, and the other party, you know, basically doesn't have the time to figure things out, or is blindsided by, you know, a request, it's just very hard to make this work. And this could work the other way around, too. So my goal would also be not just to talk to the district, you know, whenever one of us needs something, but be talking to each other on a continuous basis, maybe have joint board meetings sometimes, so that the city knows what's going on in the school district and vice versa. I think that would be a great help, and basically talk throughout the year and make sure that we know where the other party stands.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Boyer?
All right. Well, Eli's got my questions over there or something. Said you weren't trying to push it to budget, but I was planning to go there next. The district's school budget that everyone will get to vote on on the 20th is looking at a 3.9% spending increase with 1.34% tax levy increase. Among other things, it's adding 9.4 full-time equivalent positions, taking 1.57 million out of reserves to balance the budget. That's a quick synopsis, of course, but my question about what you know of the budget, will you support it on May 20th? Why or why not?
Mr. Hernandez, we'll start with you. You've already voted once.
Absolutely. And I'll tell you why. I can sit here and tell you that in the past three years, I've supported and will continue to support the budget because of the way we're doing it. There is nothing in here, please understand, there is nothing in here that is just added because we want to. Everything in here is for our programs, for our children. Auburn spends $1,500, $15,000, excuse me, per pupil. The national average is $20,000, okay? We're doing well. We are better than we were before. I can tell you that the best thing that we have done as a board, since I've been on the board for the past three years, is select a leader that has literally turned every stone around, everything, to look at where our resources are. We have added positions, taken positions down. We're not asking for any extra money from the community. We have been able to turn things around in order to make it better for us. And so when you look at, we look at our inclusion classrooms and where we're at, it is better than it was before, okay? So when you look at the additional elementary teacher to accommodate enrollment changes, we've been able to look at it so that the last, at the last minute, we're not saying, our enrollment has gone up, what do we do? We don't have anybody in reserve. We don't have anybody in reserve to be able to move forward. So these are some of the things. As far as where, when it comes to the budget, I do support the budget personally, and the reasons why is the 1.34 that we're asking is the tax levy. It is what we have, we've been able to manage and make it fiscally responsible.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Salvage, on the budget?
I had the opportunity over the last couple months when budget presentations started to see the budget numbers change from, pretty much from week to week, as the business manager, Lisa Green, would do her presentations to the board. And I saw sort of a little bit of the process of what goes into making those budgets and how the current board had to adjust, because basically until almost the last day, until the state passes their budget, our school district almost doesn't know exactly how much money they can count on from the state, and more than half of the funds that our school district receives comes through various state aids. So I think it's a very difficult process to come up with the budget because there are a lot of unknowns until the last minute, and I think nobody wants to raise taxes. But the 1.34%, I think, is, for what we're getting, for the additions that are being done, for the maintenance and the equipment and everything else that has been added, I think $14 altogether, if you have a star exemption for a $100,000 house, is not a lot. And from what I understand from the governor's budget, there will be a rebate program. So since the board managed to stay within the tax cap, homeowners will get their money back. So I do support the budget, and, but I'm also looking forward to next year's budget, and I know it's not going to be easy, because the money, the sort of additional money that the district received this year, which is not really additional, but really restored from money being owed to the district, might not be there next year. So we go from year to year. I mean, this year, I think they've done an excellent job with what they had. Next year, it might be a lot different.
Thank you. Ms. Barnard?
I'm in full support of this budget. I watched the process, a lot of this process on TV, because I had other scheduling constraints. I watched the process, a lot of this process on TV because I had other scheduling constraints. I was, went through the budget process with the capital project and then two years ago when I I ran for the school board and it was a very painful process watching the cuts that had to be made, watching the students come to those meetings and literally begging to keep programs enforced at the junior high and the high schools. My granddaughter was co-captain of the color guard. And it was really painful to her to think that the color guard might be cut because I told her, I says, it's on the chopping block. She was in that for three years and it really helped to frame and and help her develop and grow in her character. And I watched some of these teaching positions be cut and staff positions be cut and the ramifications that then has on the children and the parents and the district because you're asking more people to do less. And the primary reason is, is because Albany owes this district a lot of money. I went to a forum post-election and there was a gentleman there with years and years of experience in the financing of the district and he had a multiple-page slide presentation regarding how much money Albany owes us and it's literally in the millions of dollars. So they're not, i.e., giving us something that is not owed us. We need to continue with firm communication with Albany to get those monies back, to keep this funding in place, keep these teachers and the staff with the tools that they need, the safe environment for the kids. So I am 100% for this budget.
Thank you. Just to give you an idea of where we are, we're about halfway through our Auburn Large School District Forum for 2012. We have three of the four candidates with us tonight. They are Eli Hernandez, who is finishing his first term on the Board of Education, first time candidate Monica Salvage, as well as Kathy Barnard, who is running for the second time. Carol Soles, who is the member of the board and is an incumbent and is the president of the board, was unable to join us. She alerted us to this fact prior to our taping. And Amanda Gower has decided not to seek another term. Mr. Boyer.
All right. One of the things I want to get into in terms of this debate is what's going on in the classroom. And one of the things that Auburn's done this year, a new thing, is the inclusion model of of education where there's a lot of co-teaching going on in the classroom. Students with special needs are being kept in the regular classroom more often. And I'm, you know, I'd heard a lot of concern about that beginning of the year from some, from teachers and parents about how that was going to end up going. And just wondering from what you're hearing, from what you're seeing, how has that model worked out and is it worth to, worth to continue to push in that direction?
We'll start with Ms. Salvage.
From what I hear, this model has been adopted because there is, there are studies and there is data that suggests if you put regular ed students together with special ed students, that both groups in the end perform better. And I didn't know about this before. I learned about this when I, my husband and I checked out Casey Park School and we walked around with the principal there and we actually walked into classrooms as they were in session and he explained that that process or that that model to us. And I might have expected beforehand that it would be chaotic or it would be loud or that there might be disturbances in there. But half of the time, you didn't even know that there was inclusion going on. It was very calm, it was very, it was very calm and just very, very professionally handled. So I, not knowing before what this, you know, what this model really means, I was very impressed by how it was handled in this school and I'm sure it's, it's going to be handled similarly in 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 other schools. I think it's very good for our regular ed students to, to develop a sense of what a regular society looks like and be able to deal with all sorts of people. And the same for the special ed students. I don't think it makes much sense to keep them separated all the time. I think it's, it's important for them to get the one-on-one and and get the aides that they need to to be able to work on their, on their specialized curriculum and their specialized programs that they have. But I think it's good for for both sides to interact with each other and it's good for compassion, it's good for basically interact and 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 see that there are different people out there, there are different kids out there and you'll, you'll see that later on in life, too.
Thank you. Ms. Barnard on this issue.
I haven't had the chance to tour a school, but I've, I've talked to some of the teachers that say that they have the inclusion at there and with the appropriate staff in there, that it seems to be a model that is working because once again, it it doesn't segregate the child with the special needs from the rest of the population, but it does provide them with their own particular forum to learn at their pace, their, their skill set. And it also provides the regular student, if you will, with the opportunity to see that there are students out there that, they look a little different, they may talk a little different, the same way that you have with students of different race. You, you look like me physically, but you're a little bit different. And to incorporate that into their learning set so as they go forward into adulthood, they're more comfortable with this, there's more empathy, I think. I think you have less picking, maybe these kids being picked on for their differences because there's an acceptance factor from this inclusion process that, okay, Johnny may be a little bit different, but he also has these skills. And I think it also helps to pull these kids forward because a lot of children, even with Down's syndrome, have been considered, well, they can't do this. And and with the proper teaching and encouragement and exposure, they can do phenomenally well and function in the world quite nicely. So it's not putting these kids in a box and saying, you can go just as far. So I would say, then I would be for the inclusion.
Thank you. Ms. Barnard, Mr. Hernandez.
Inclusion, special education. Special education is based off, it's not based on behavior, it's based on the child being able to learn and learns a little different, okay? That's what special education is. Special education is that that child may learn a little different and may need a different way. What we have done in Auburn, we've looked at the data. And what we've seen is that we, we noticed that our kids do perform better. Not necessarily our special education students, but our general education students tend to perform better. And why is that? It's because all the modifications that are given to the special education student are now being given into the classroom with all the general education students. And that allows them to be able to, so the assumption is, well, you're a general education student or you're here, you can certainly get this, I don't have to go through certain steps. And that's not the case. So when you roll it up, okay, when you, when you, when you go step by step in the process of of learning anything, okay, you tend to focus. And that is being done, the modifications with this, you know, you put up a picture versus you just give the vocab words, but now you're showing a picture associated with it. That's not cheating, that's just simply giving you more information. And for a person like me who's an ESL student, okay, I, I didn't understand, so I was able to look at the picture and say, oh, I get it. Now I associate the word with the picture. These are the things that are going on in the classroom. Yet, you know what? It was difficult. Change is difficult, plain and simple, okay? So you had teachers, you had parents, you had everyone concerned. But it's better now. We, we look at the process and it's better now. Now we have everyone saying, well, can we get more special education teachers, right? We, we see this special education that is put in, in the, in the budget is because in one specific school right now, it's important for us to have that position, okay, so that then we can really deliver the service.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Mr. Boyer.
And of course, we can't talk about education this year without talking about the Common Core. So obviously, there's been a lot of debate, a lot of discussion about how it's being implemented across the country, but of course, in New York State. So I just want to hear all three of your opinions on, on how it is being implemented as well as some of the changes that are now being made to that implementation as a result of what's going on in Albany this year.
Ms. Barnard, I was looking forward to this question, so we'll start with you off.
As I said, I have teachers who are friends and retired and actively teaching. And I've heard this Common Core term being thrown around for several weeks and months and I'm going, I couldn't get a handle on what the Common Core was. What is the Common Core? Okay, finally got some definition on what the Common Core is, English language skills and math, okay? And I talked to teachers and parents who said they're pulling their hair out with this thing. And I read what was in the press regarding, okay, it's, the state says you have to do this, some of it filtered down from the feds who said the states have to do this, it's now uniform across the United States. And I went to the forum that was held at BTW this week and got some more definition on it, that it's, basically, it's to help pull our school system forward and put us on more of a level field with the global learning skills, which I think is a good thing. Because in the world of technology that we have, if we don't pull these kids forward and raise our level of learning, we'll be lagging rather than leading in the skill set. With the technology that we have, we have to be a, a frontrunner in the global learning community. So just for kicks and giggles, I went on the website, which is Engage New York, and sat there for 30 minutes looking at a second grade math problem, 30 minutes. And realized as I'm reading through the text that it says, okay, this is second grade math. Now, I remember second grade math, even with my grandkids, they're basically learning the rudiments of math, addition, subtraction, recognizing the numbers, just the rudimentary stuff. This was incorporating both metric and the US system. So it's a whole different way of approaching the math. And I just got into the math portion, didn't even, couldn't even have time to get into the English modules. But it took me 30 minutes to sit there and look through two different sets, both that had the using, starting with 10 and another one using 100 as your basis points and then working through these math problems. And I could really understand why the parents are frustrated with this. So it's going to be a learning curve.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez on this issue of the Common Core.
So, so one of the things to talk about as far as the Common Core. The Common Core, I don't believe that it's the problem, okay? I think the, the frustration here is the exams, the test, the assessments. That's the major frustration, that is the stressor. Let's not forget APPR, okay? That's, that's all intertwined. You're telling me that as a teacher, I now have to teach this Common Core, okay? You're going to give me this test, this assessment, and then you're going to evaluate me on the performance. But you, you raised the bar and there's nothing wrong in raising the bar, okay? But you're going to judge me on these exams, part of it, right, which is part of the APPR. There is angst, there is anxiety from students to parents to teachers. And I hear all the time now that the students are stressing it and I've been trying to figure out myself, why are you stressing? It's another test. I went through exams, I went through my teacher exams and it took me several times before I passed them. So I get it, now I understand, but why are we stressing it? And part of it is the exam. The, the exams that are associated with it, that is what is really driving a lot of people that are making it very uncomfortable. The standards themselves are good, are good passage. So I'll tell you, last week, we were off from our school. I sat down with my daughter Mariela, helping her with kindergarten math work. I was lost. It's kindergarten. So along comes Enrique and he's like, Daddy, I know what that means. So I stand there and he starts explaining it to her and I understood. To me, that's priceless. I didn't get it, right? So I'm 41, here comes seven-year-old who's teaching, just like how many of our young kids can take out a cellphone or something and teach us a few things. To me, that's awesome. Yet, so I didn't, I feel uncomfortable, I didn't know, right? But I learned through him. Those are some of the things that we have to look at, look at the positive. We can certainly improve it and I'll raise my hand to come back.
All right. So you'll have two minutes on this issue of the Common Core.
Yes. I think we all want to know where our children stand in the various levels of their educational journey. And in order to know that or to be able to compare them, we need to have certain goals. You can call them standards, in the real life, they're called goals, to measure them against. And I read somewhere, if you want to get something done, you need it measured. Because otherwise, it's not what I think, it's not what an individual teacher thinks if a, you know, if a kid is doing a good job or not, you've got to measure it against something. So the states, or New York State in particular, I think 44 others voluntarily developed those standards with input from teachers and a lot of other groups. And I think having standards is not a bad thing, just like you have goals in your job that you have to work towards, I think it's good for our kids to have goals to work towards, too. And even in your job, it's not always that you get to set those standards. So here, the kids didn't get to set those standards either. And right now, it's the first year that those standards are being implemented, so it's a phase of transition. It's change. It scares people, it scares the kids, it scares the, the parents because they don't really know. And I think one of the issues is more like teachers want to protect their kids because they don't know what's going on. And that's a problem because you don't want parents to be scared. So I think that the standards are not the problem, I think it's the implementation, how it was rolled out from the state, that the teachers didn't always have all the necessary information to teach whatever they need to be teaching for a certain test. And that is frustration on the part of the teachers then. So, so I think, you know, this is the first year and it, and it's hard and and people are just, you know, confused about what's going on and there's a lot of opposition to it naturally. But I think it will take a couple of years and and after that, I think we will see, and we can effectively then really gouge where, where our children stand.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez, you'll get another minute.
Okay.
Anyone else on?
So, so rolling it out is important. And so, looking at it, right? Let's look at Enrique. Enrique is going to be in third grade next year. He is expected, let's say, Common Core started this year, right? So he hasn't had Common Core hypothetically, kindergarten first and second, okay? Now, the Common Core is rolled out. He's now in third grade and he's about to take this assessment. But what happened K1 and 2? That Common Core wasn't in place. So how could you roll out a Common Core? K12, here it is, okay? And now, you're going to follow a test that we're going to create. We're going to pay someone to create for you, okay? And so, how could it have been rolled out a little different was you can increment, you can do K1 and 2. You could have rolled it out for kindergarten first and second grade, year one. Now you know that those second graders will now be third graders, then you can begin the testing, okay? The others that were 3 through 8 at that time, you could have kept the same exams. So it's rolling it out. Why wasn't it rolled out? So that's some of the questions that I would ask. Why was it rolled out in this manner? Why couldn't we roll it out a little different? That's just one way that could have been different. Because the part of it is not the standards themselves, they're great, they're going to push us to that level. I'm, I'm, next year, I want to see Enrique further out with all the other third graders in New York State. I want to see where he stands. That's the only way you're going to be globally competitive.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Boyer.
Okay. The, the district's been working, I think, through a, a task force on the West, West Middle School building and that's been closed now, I think, in its second year of being And finding some challenges in repurposing that building, I think tied to some of the debt on the building as well as just being an old school building and it's not easy to find people that can take that over. So what do you think needs to happen with that building going forward as well as how do you think the district has handled it so far?
Mr. Hernandez, you have this question first.
Three years ago, I stood here and I was opposing to West Middle School closing. I was very disappointed, that's a school that I worked in. And I understand that now, I understand now, $2 million. It's saving the district $2 million. If we had the $2 million, we should open it back up. It's been difficult to, to rent it, to sell it, to do what we have to do because there are laws associated with it. And Ms. Evelyn has done an excellent job in informing the board and the things that we can and cannot do. We have created a, a sheet that is uploaded to the website explaining, here's what we have saved, here's what, what we could, what could have been done, what, what we, our constraints when it comes to, to West Middle School. Ideally, our school's overflowing. I mean, we're running out of room, okay? Ideally, would be great if we can open West Middle School. Financially, we're not there yet. That would be bringing back $2 million, staff and everything. That is not clearly in our budget. So, again, some of the things that we have been told is our debt is tied not only to that specific building, it's tied into every building. And so if, if we owe X amount of dollars, that debt that we believe was for West Middle School and we get that, that's not the case, everything goes for the entire district. And, and so it's all tied in together into all the buildings and it makes it difficult. It's a great building, to tell you the truth, old, but it was remodeled before it was closed for the most part. So it's a great building, it's in great shape, but we're bounded by certain laws. So it's a great building, it's in great shape, but we're bounded by certain laws, as far as like 5% of where we're at, of the occupancy of it.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Selvage on the issue of West Middle.
When I decided to run for school board, one of the first things that people came up to me with was like, why was West Middle School closed? And I'm frankly, have to say, I don't know. I mean, I followed the, you know, I followed the discourse at that time, and obviously it was about financial issues. But people still, to this day, and people even working in the schools, have the problem of saying, I'm not, I know why it has been closed, but I'm not really sure why it had to be West Middle. And in my mind, right now, that's not the issue, because the issue is, it has been closed, but this is still on people's minds. They're still talking about West Middle, so it's not that people have just forgotten about it because the building is closed. It is a great building, and it would be great to have it repurposed for the highest purpose we can find. But what Eli alluded to, that there are very complex issues associated with the bond, also that there can only be 5% of non-public use, makes it hard to either sell or lease either way. What I find interesting is that the state urges school district to consolidate shared services. Now, the Auburn School District closed West Middle, which is, you can say, you know, a consolidation of buildings, yet the state makes it very hard for, and it's not the only school building here in Auburn, I mean, there are all over the place, those empty school buildings. So the state makes it very hard to do something with those buildings. Just like the state is trying to sell their empty, state-owned buildings, and they found ways to get around those things. It would be great to have mechanisms in place where the state would loosen up some regulations, or help those, and work with our school districts to make it easier to A, lease it, or sell it, or whatever it is. So, and again, it comes back to advocacy, it's not about, you know, us talking about that, it's about voters talking to the representatives and advocating for something that could help our district.
Thank you. Ms. Barnard.
Yes, as Eli alluded to, the budget for that school of $2 million a year is money that simply is not in the budget. And a lot of parents that I spoke to, that was on their lips, that why can't West Middle be opened again? Because it has created a crowding in our schools. And again, it comes down to getting the monies back out of Albany. In a perfect world, we could tap that till tomorrow, reopen that school, which did have a lot of improvements done to it prior to being closed, which is really the sad part. And I, parents would talk to me that they were concerned about the consolidation of, like even fifth and sixth, fourth, fifth and sixth grade kids with junior high kids, feeling that because of the technology in today's world, that the seventh and eighth graders are kind of taking a leap into the adult world, where they want to keep the elementary kids more elementary. And again, there are the legal considerations regarding repurposing the building. I understood at one point that Mary Garant Theater was trying to use part of it. That doesn't seem to have worked out. So it's an ongoing conversation, trying to figure out what to do with that building because of the constraints on it. I mean, it's a beautiful building, I went to a lot of functions there, my granddaughter went there. If we, ultimately, I think it'd be nice if the city could get permission, if their school district might even be able to get permission to sell the building and recapture some of its funds. Of course, that goes in with the bond issue. So there's some complex issues when it comes to how to use a building and what to do with it. There's no easy answer to that. In a perfect world, I would like to see that school reopened and, you know, get smaller classroom sizes. Because that was, a lot of the parents talked to me about, that they didn't like the fact that their kids were, especially the elementary school kids, were dispersed throughout the district, and now, you know, the classrooms are a lot more crowded. So it's an ongoing conversation regarding that building. Perhaps we can keep with the voters and get the money to reopen that building.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez, you get one minute.
All I want you to know, the community and everyone here, is the board is constantly working with the superintendent on figuring out what we can do. Okay? Despite with all the, with all the constraints that we have, it's still, it's now something that we've put away, we've been working on it on a monthly basis, there is conversation. And our board updates, what can we do, where are we, what are the things that we need to do? We're in a good position, I want to say, with the work of our superintendent and where she's been, as far as where she's at right now when it comes to Albany, and the task force she's been asked to be a part of, because that, I believe, will give us leverage in the future. So looking forward where we're at, we will be able to do something with West, we have to, we all know that. It's just a matter of time.
Thank you. And thank you all for answering the questions over the last, believe it or not, 15 minutes. Mr. Boyer has still three or four he'd like to ask you, he'd most likely do that in editorial board meetings, so be prepared. But we'll close out now with closing statements, and as we said at the beginning of the show, we'll go in reverse order of who made opening statements. So Kathy Barnard will be making our first closing.
Well, to the parents and the citizens of Auburn, I want to say, I think the most important thing you can do is go to the voting booth and voice your vote there. This is our district, these are our children, this is our schools. We need to give every effort to supporting the staff, the teachers, the children of this district, because they are, the children are the most important people that we're talking about in this conversation. The teachers, the staff of the schools needs to be supported, because they're the ones that's on the front line every day, and we entrust the safety of our children with these people. I think we need to have a continuing, ongoing conversation with Albany to put pressure on them to regain the monies that have been taken from these districts. And it's not just them adding money to the pot, it's actually regaining the monies that have been taken, so that we can move forward with pulling this district forward and improving on the work that the board has done and that the supervisor has done to date. I think she's done a phenomenal job. I would like to get more information on the common core, because I've heard a lot of frustration over that. I'm going to educate myself more on that, so that I can even help my grandchildren with it. I would like to see that, if at all possible, in the future, West Middle open, so that there are smaller classes. Issues that I would like to continue working on would be the safety issues and social economic issues in the schools. But I do have to say, with all of the issues that the school district has faced in the last couple of years, I've also seen a lot of kids graduate with Regis diplomas from our high school, go on to renowned universities and colleges. And with the world that these children are going into today, which is very, very challenging, this district is doing something right with all of the hard challenges it's had to face. And I take my hat off to the superintendent, to the board, to the staff, to the parents, and everybody who lives in Auburn, to support these kids, and support our teachers, and support our district. Voice your opinion in the voting booth, pick who you think is best to serve you. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnard. Monica Selvage, you'll have your two minutes now as well.
Yes, thank you. I chose Auburn as my home, and I care deeply about this community. This is reflected in my years of community outreach and leadership. I take pride of being part of the progress of local organizations and the community as a whole. And now I'm offering my services and passion to represent children, parents, teachers, all our taxpayers and residents here on the Auburn School Board. I want to help all children succeed, no matter where they are in their educational journey, be that they need the extra challenge, or that they need the extra help. I also want to help parents be confident of Auburn Public Schools, and be proud that they send their kids there, and help them be advocates for the education of their children. And I also want to help residents understand better what it takes to run a school district, and why good public schools are so important, not just for the children and their parents, but for the community as a whole. Public education today is very complex, and there are many challenges that lie ahead. But I see challenges as opportunities to rise up to and grow stronger. And if there's anything worth rising up to and being strong for, I believe it's the education of our children. I'm dedicated to putting my time in, and my passion, and my energy. I will do my homework and my due diligence. And I'm not afraid to ask questions, and I'm not afraid to make hard choices. Please vote for me on May 20th, and together, we can make Auburn Public Schools the schools of choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Selvage. Mr. Hernandez, you'll finish us off with your two-minute closing.
Thank you. Thank you to CCC, Mr. Boyer from the Citizen, Mr. Casantino, the candidates. Thank you all for allowing us to be in your homes this evening and talk about our children and their education. So being on the school board is difficult. Okay? I can tell you first 10, three years, I've been an administrator, two children, family involved in the community. I can tell you I've gone from a big size to a small size, so I think that's what happens when you're on the school board. So ladies, be ready. So a few years ago, I came to you and I talked to you about the importance of what we needed to do transparency. We've done a better job at that. We talked about leadership, we've done an excellent job at that. We talked about our resources, we're doing better. More needs to happen. Our leadership needs to stay intact, it needs to be working together. We are working as a better unit, both the Board of Education, the superintendent, and the district. Fiscal responsibility, we're still missing $24 million. $24 million that Albany has not given us. We need to be, continue being active and getting that. And student success, we do need to recognize all the work. And it's not only the standards, exams, standard testing of the students, but the work that they're doing, their community involvement. When they leave here, and we have a commendation for all our students, and we talk about the millions of dollars that they're walking away with scholarships, it's a big deal. It is a big deal. There's a lot of success taking place in Auburn. And how do we continue? We go from good, better, and best. And we never let it rest until our good is better, and our better is best. I've served you for three years, I believe I've done a good job, I want to do a better job in serving you. I'm fortunately, as a standing board member, I can't tell you to support the budget, I can only tell you that I am supporting the budget, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you.
And thank you all three, for not only showing up today to answer questions from Mr. Boyer, but also putting yourselves out there, not always an easy task in elections, and we wish you well in the next three weeks as you continue your campaigns. We'd also like to thank Mr. Boyer for his thoughtful questions, as always, and for the citizens' support of this effort. Finally, before we go, we do want to remind you that the school board will have their board elections on May 20th. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. This year round, just so you're aware, the school district is asking, we tried to deal with this on the other night when we had Inside Government, a survey to ask you why you voted. It's an optional voluntary anonymous survey, but they hope that the, to get some direction for where the district will be going. It's a one-pager, it's very easy to fill out, and we encourage you to do that when you go to the polls. We also want to thank Karen Vaseel and Loretta Van Horn of the district, who are always great working with us to get the candidates here in the studio, and we want to thank them and appreciate their hard work. Before we go, this is our last show for the season. We finish up with Beyond the Front Page and Inside Government on Tuesday, they'll be shown after this particular forum. But we could not do these forums or these shows without Professor Steve Keeler, Mike Morano, Doug Brill, and Sean Seacor, and all of the students who are here. They earn credit towards their degrees here in the telecommunications department. So on behalf of Community College, we want to thank you for watching. We urge you to exercise your right to vote on May 20th. We hope you have a good night and have a great tomorrow.